Okay, the Controller on Wednesday, June the 3rd, sent all of you a update on the budget and year-to-date balances as of the end of May. So, we have spent the last couple of days, and when I say "we," Elizabeth, Chrissy, myself, Linda Vance, and as needed, other department heads, to try to determine what our financial situation will be at the end of June 30th, 2020. So, hopefully, you all received the copy, I don't think it was sent out till this afternoon, of 2019-2020 financial projections. So, our starting point under revenues was the amended budget, and this number, $52,397,025, is the amount and ties in to the budget that Linda Vance had sent to all of you on the 3rd, and that number comes right off the particular schedule, so that it's on page 2 of 29, so you can see where that number came from. And then, what we did is we looked at major items, and I will tell you, we went through all the accounts in detail, but we only highlighted the major items, because we have minor amounts going one way and the other way, and they kind of offset each other. But here were the big ones that we took into account. Under revenues, we are anticipating to reduce state shared revenues to the tune of a half a million, $500,000. We reduced district court revenues by $965,000. The cable funds, this was the funds to be used for the new studio, so that was in last year's budget, and what we would have done is drawn that money out of the PEG fees to pay for it. So, we're not, we're not going to do that by June 30th, so that's $450,000 that will not be spent. Then, we had unused COVA appropriations, and this was a multitude of items that when the COVID started back in March, we were looking at different things to be able to continue to operate. We thought we would have to go right through June and into the next year, and that did not prove to be necessary. So, you have items like, we were starting to run a third ambulance, we were shifting hours in the police department, and those have subsequently, we don't have that extra ambulance running right now, and we don't have, we went back to the normal hours and what the budget calls or the contract calls for with the police department, so, but that resulted in $480,068, a loss of revenue. And then, rental fees, we're just not operating a recreation department during this virus, so there's $170,000 of estimated reduced revenues. So, altogether, instead of being able to have revenues of $52,397,025, we think the revenues that we expect at June 30th would be $49,831,957. So, that was the, and then, we go to the expenditures. In the same report that was sent June 3rd, if you turn to, just before the library, that's page 20, well, 29 of 29, the $52,181,901 comes right off that report, and that was the amended total per budget for expenditures. We have a reduction in healthcare, which is just significant, and we checked twice and third times, and we think this is a very accurate number. We're self-insured, a lot of people have put off surgeries and other types of things, and the claims are way, way down. So, we expect the amount of billing that we're going to get from Blue Cross Bus Shule, who manages our healthcare plan, our self-insured healthcare plan, will be $1,935,000. And, as we had above, the cable studio is not going to be built in the next three weeks, so the expenditures were reduced for $450,000. It's an offset between the revenue expenses and matches. Then, we have deferred social security under the federal legislation, and that will be approximately $500,000 or a half a million. That will drive our total expenditures down to $49,296,901. And that then gives us expected revenues over expenditures of $535,056, and that's what we would expect will go back into fund balance for the year. Now, I will tell you that we've looked at, we took three different approaches to this. The approach I'm presenting to you is the high-management approach, but is very accurate and a good way to look at this. We also had the staff go through all individual line items, including myself, to see if there were any other major items that we needed to be aware of and look at. So, I mean, if you had a particular account, we would be prepared to give you an answer, but those numbers were not real significant that would move this number significantly. Now, the third approach was an even higher level, in which we looked at to see originally what we thought was going on, and in that particular regard, we came up to around a half a million again. So, I feel pretty good about this particular projection. I think the way to look at it is, don't hold us that it's going to be $535,056. I think that is the median, but it could be as high as $800,000, and it could be as low as $250,000. And the reason I say that is, I mean, it's always conceivable that there could be something else out there, or a number of items could shift, but we feel pretty good about the $535,056. Think it's a good number, and we think we're going to end the year on a positive note. I'm open for any questions.
Okay, if anybody has any questions, please raise your hand on the, okay, we've got Councilman Constance, go ahead, please.
Mayor, the MMRMA, our self-insured group, I would think that auto accidents, workers' comp, particularly workers' comp, everybody's at home, our different claims would be down, maybe workers' comp is separate, but any, what's the projection regarding that revenue from the refund, if any, from MMRMA?
When you look at that particular refund, if you want to call it, it's a timing issue, and this is why you have to look at our operations in two ways. There is the book side, which is what I'm talking about right now, and then, there's a cash flow side, because what happens with the MMRA refund is it actually is in the 2021, 2021 budget year, and in fact, the number was larger, and I believe John has indicated we either have received the over a million dollars, or we will be receiving it very quickly, according to Chrissy, so, but it will not impact this particular year, because in 2019-20, it was the MMRA refund that we received last summer that impacted this. So, we pretty much got what we thought we were going to get. This year's refund was larger, and the other thing that has to be analyzed is that that number is not purely general fund money. What, what we go through, and, you know, we insure the highway department, the library, the water department, so that's, some of that money and that refund has to go back to the water department and to the highway fund, and so, it's a larger number. If we were doing a cash flow analysis, I would have great news and tell you that we got a few hundred thousand dollars more than what we expected, but from a book standpoint, it doesn't apply, because that will be shown as next year in the budget year that was just approved last week, if that makes sense.
Yeah, we won't be seeing that for some time. Thank you, thank you.
Hey, is there any other questions from the audience, Councilman Abella?
You got unmuted here.
I'm muted.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, in regards to the rental fees, can you describe to me specifically where those specifically come from, under revenues?
That, those come from two sources, but for instance, like, if you wanted to have a party at the Richard Jones Center, the Ray, you would be able to rent out the room for a shower, a birthday party, or the canceled center, so you'd be able to, those are those kind of rentals.
But don't you think $170,000 is a little excessive? Do you really think we could get that type of rental revenue during this COVID situation with very little people doing any type of gatherings?
No, that, that's why we, no, that's why we took it all out. We're not saying add it back in, this is what we took out, because we don't think we're going to get anything, so we took it.
So, what do you have the rental fees projected at, then?
For the year, it was basically what we had received before March, so, let me turn to the page. Okay, on that 29-page listing that Linda Vance sent out, give you an instance, like, there were senior trips, so year-to-date, we had collected $23,750, but the other amount, and some of that may have to get refunded back, so we didn't see any revenue more than that coming from it. Same thing with the Young Center, we thought we would see $93,446, well, actually, $134,500 in revenue, and year-to-date, we had received $93,446. So, we deducted the $41,000 from the Young Center, and then, recreation programs, it was $43,530. So, these were items that we don't think we're going to have anywhere near recreation programs in the next three weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Christine Lasswell?
I just, am I, yeah, I have an idea. Oh, sorry, I just wanted to say that if you look at that second page of revenues, it, Linda took out everything from on the 101,667, so no more ice arena run for the rest of the year, all the way down to on the senior trips, so it's all of that that's taken out, so, we just put it together as one.
Anyone else? Any further questions, Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can you explain the, in the revenues of $450,000 for cable funds and the expenditures of $450,000 in TV studio, can you give us, explain that?
Yes, in, in last year's budget, we had set aside $450,000 to upgrade the cable operations and the studio. So, that money for upgrading would come out of the PEG fees, PEG funds, so consequently, that would have been a allocation from the PEG funds to the general fund, and the general fund would have spent exactly that amount. So, we didn't, we didn't do that, it got put on hold, so consequently, we, it's a big item, and we took it both out of the revenues and out of the expenses, so, because it's just not going to happen in the next three weeks.
Okay, so you're saying it's just a wash, then?
Yes, yes, yeah, it's, we would not have used general fund monies for the construction and of the cable TV studio that we would use PEG funds for, so it is, it's a wash.
All right, thank you.
Hey, is there any further questions from anyone?
Can I mention a couple of other things that at least I can alert all of you to, is I've been spending a lot of time with our, one of our two congresswomen, Debbie Dingle, and Debbie is still tracking and hopes that the federal government will take up the bill that was passed by the House. That has in it significant amount of monies, and in Dearborn Heights cases, amounts to millions of dollars. Now, will that get passed in the Senate? I have no idea. She still is optimistic. We did not include any of that money in our analysis, because we don't know if it's going to come or not. There are also some other grants and things that we are tracking, that Lisa Martin and the fire department filed grant applications for us. We feel good about those, but we did not feel that they should be put into this particular analysis. I also mentioned to you, there is a rule in accounting that revenue has to be received within 60 or 90 days after year-end to be included in that particular year. So, consequently, with a June 30th close, this money has to come in by the end of August, and so consequently, we thought that that was kind of, it's hard to tell when that money would arrive, so we did not put it in here. I tell you that, because there is a potential for some really good news, and if that should happen, we'd be more, we're more than happy to share it with you as soon as we learn about it, but for this particular analysis, we thought it would not be prudent to put those numbers in, that we feel reasonably good, that I think it's remarkable if we finish the year with revenues over expenditures in light of the fact that in the last three months, I mean, I was telling one other mayor that I was talking with last week, and I said, "Did you ever think we signed up for a pandemic, a financial disaster, and, and also now, we have serious race relations going on in the United States?" And it's just like, all this has happened in the last 90 days, which is just unbelievable, and hopefully, the next 90 days are going to be much more quieter, peaceful, and easier to deal with.
Let's hope.
Okay, are we done with any other questions on the budget? From anyone? Okay, at this time, we're going to run, we're going to move forward with the Van Born Quarter update. Who do we need to unmute to add to this?
There are a couple of people that I think would be really good to have, because the people that serve for, on behalf of the city of Dearborn Heights, and that joint Taylor-Dearborn Heights Commission is really the TIFRA board, pretty much, and Tom would be excellent.
Okay, I mean, I need them, I just want the names, and then I can get them unmuted.
Yeah, Tom, another person that's very passionate about this, that really has spent a lot of time and effort, and they have a business down there, would be Lisa Carty, and Lisa, I don't know if she's on this particular call, but Lisa is very passionate about this. I would include her also.
Okay. George? We've lost George, okay, I'll do it. All right.
Lisa's unmuted, Lisa's unmuted.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Mayor, that will need to add to this?
Well, I would start with those two, and then, if they feel that there's somebody else that they would like to bring on, but they can give you, I think, a clear picture of what is trying to be accomplished, and the monumental historical impact that this joint operation between Taylor and Dearborn Heights, and, and just the great ideas and thoughts that we have, but also, they're going to touch upon the fact that they were working on ordinances and controlling certain kinds of businesses, like we wanted to limit used car lots going in all along Van Born Quarter, and that was one of the primary things they were working on, but with that, I'd let Tom or Lisa go on from there.
Um, go ahead, Tom.
Oh, hi. Hello, everybody. Hey, well, as the mayor mentioned, it's a project, I think, you know, we've all been waiting for some progression here, the, unfortunately, the virus kind of really put a big bump in the road for everybody. The consultants, as we discussed back in December, the consultants were planning to get all this stuff going by, have it all done by June for the overlay district, and unfortunately, that all got put on hold, so now, we're at a situation where they're ready to go. The, what do we call it, the moratorium on the used car lots, though, is ending from your motion from December, it ends at the end of June, so I reached out to the mayor and to council chair, asking that you consider extending that for a reasonable period of time to give them the ability to finish their work on the overlay district. I don't know, they would probably have a better idea of the timing, the consultants, maybe three months, I don't know exactly, but it would be up to them, but I know we're all looking forward to something there, and I hope we can work together to get something done.
Tom, you've made an offer that you felt, and the TIFRA board felt so important about this, that you were willing as a group, I don't want to put words in your, in your mouth, and I know you have a board meeting coming up, but you thought you could defer half the cost at least for the, for the project?
Right, yeah, proposing to our TIFRA board to cover half the cost of what was presented for the, the work on this, I believe the total was $17,000 something, we can cover half of that. I'd love to cover all of it, we have the money for it, but the problem is being that half of Van Born is in the TIFRA district and half is outside, realistically, we can just cover the half of it on the cost, we can share with the city, so, I'll be bringing that up to the TIFRA board, I don't foresee any, any, anybody being against that.
Oh, presented to the board yet?
No, that'll be at tomorrow's meeting.
Okay. Now, is there any more in the presentation on this that we need to know, Mayor?
I would ask if Lisa Carty wanted to make any comments, because she's just very passionate about this project.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? I'm not sure I was unmuted, great. I really am passionate about, I think, the area, the community, just a little insight, my husband and I are both from the south end of Dearborn Heights, we still live in Dearborn Heights, so we've lived here our whole life, raised four children here, our business is now here, and we see so many people from school still come in, my husband's had lunch moms come in from St. Albert, principals, teachers, you know, it, it's fun, and we love being in the neighborhood, we love still being in the city, and to be able to see, most of our family members still live here, I'm from a family of 15, he's from a family of 10, so we have quite a few family members still in the city, some in the south end, some in the north end, you know, they're all over the city, but that passion that I've seen come through, going to the Richard A. Young meeting, and so many people that were involved that really do just want to see the neighborhood stay like it was when we were younger, you know, we love walking to Kmart when we were kids, and, you know, walking up to Sexton's to get an ice cream. I think a lot of the people are still in the neighborhood, and they want to see that come back, that sense of community. I think they feel just a little disconnected right now. Van Born, a lot of the comments were, you know, it's just looking old, it's looking, you know, a little decrepit, a lot of the business owners have tried to clean up, I know we're trying to, right now, we have a landscaper waiting to come in, he's a little behind, but we're all trying very hard to keep it up, and like the mayor said, or Tom said, as a TIFRA member or TIFRA director, I do see a lot of ordinance that we put on the people, the residents in the area, so I would think ourselves, if we're going to put that on them, you know, I would like to take on a little commitment and say, you know, it's just not about you cleaning up your area, the city's also committed to, you know, wanting to clean it up and make it look nice for you, it's just something I think we could give back to the residents and let them know, you know, it's something we want to do for you, we want you to be able to drive into your neighborhood and be proud of it. Get a lot of comments from the neighbors in the area, they appreciate that we keep our lawn cut, you know, it's such a simple thing, but people appreciate it, they like going into a neighborhood that looks nice, and when they have friends come over, you know, you, you want them to see that you live somewhere that looks kept up, so, you know, I hope really we can work something out, and whatever you would need from me, I'm willing to put in whatever I can do to help, you know, research, whatever you guys need, I'm here, I'm willing to do whatever may come up, you know, to help either this project or just get Van Born going to, to look cleaner, look nicer, and make our residents feel proud that they're from Dearborn Heights again.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, did you have anybody else to present, anything further?
Well, I don't know if there's any other board members that would want to speak, but I, one other thing is, I went back, because some of the criticism was that they hadn't seen results, but one of the things that impacted this was late last year, the mayor at Taylor has had some difficulty, and I don't think that this particular project was number one on his list. When Lisa and others contacted me, and they said, you know, we're not, there doesn't seem to be any motion, well, then, I started making the calls, made the outreach to the mayor at Taylor, and said, you know, "Are you still for the project? We'd still like to do this in Dearborn Heights," and he said, "Yes." So, we started things again in January and February, and there were meetings between Taylor and Dearborn Heights, I think I attended two of them, and they came out with a really good plan to redo the overlay of the ordinances and the planning for both communities, and also some other things, like common signage, giving the particular area an identity. So, it was all set to go, and then, the virus hit, so I would hope that people would look at the fact that it wasn't inaction of the people that were working on this, but rather, it was the COVID virus that kind of delayed it, and seriously reconsidering, I really believe this is going to be so beneficial to our residents in the south end, and in the very near future, when things start to go on with the Ecorse Creek, the Army Corps of Engineers, this all could create a huge synergy and make Van Born a major component part of development for Taylor and Dearborn Heights, and I would certainly, we're going to put it back on for the agenda in two weeks, but we, I appreciate the chair having this particular meeting, because I think this is extremely important, and the work that has already been done, so, I don't know, Tom, is there any other members you have that might want to say something?
Get unmute, Tom.
George? I asked to unmute him, he has to do it.
Okay, there we go. Um, yeah, I don't have any other TIFRA board members, I see John Zadikian is on, he's a member of the steering committee, John, they have something to say?
John, raise your hand if you have something to say, and I'll unmute, okay, I'll unmute you, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, and thanks again for having this study session on this. I echo what Lisa said, being born and raised in the south end, still live here, have my business here, there's a lot of pride amongst those of us in the community, and as we all know, it's difficult to have an established downtown area, if you will, just based on how Dearborn Heights is shaped. You know, there's Warren Avenue, there's Ford Road, there's, you know, parts of Michigan Avenue, so on and so forth. This being such a critical piece of the puzzle with Van Born bordering Taylor, we get a lot of traffic, and maybe, I see Dan Brooks is with us here on the call as well, but we see a lot of traffic that's coming between Telegraph and the Southfield Freeway and I-94 that spills. and I-94 that spills onto Van Boren. Of course, pre-pandemic, there was a lot more. But it's just, it's an area that's just begging for a refresh, a reboot, a redevelopment. There are many business owners along the stretch, I know, that I've talked to, that when this program first started, or when the plan at least first started, they were very interested. And they came to the meeting at the Young Center, and were interested in what it was that we were trying to do, and putting together, I think we had three separate plans that were under consideration at that point. And as Director McIntyre can attest to, there's a lot to do in terms of getting both cities to, you know, come together with regard to the ordinances and things of that nature. It's, to me, it's just, it's a no-brainer, no matter where it is in the city, as far as some kind of a redevelopment plan, especially when you have a neighboring city such as Taylor that is willing to partner with us and do something that will benefit both communities. And I again echo what Lisa said. I've put in quite a bit of time on the committee, and I stand ready to help the council, the administration, with whatever else needs to be done that I can do to help this move forward. And thanks for your time.
Okay, I guess, first, before I go further, I guess I'm confused. In preparation for today, I contacted several city council members in Taylor, including their council chairman, to see where they were at in regards to this project. And all of them gave me the same answer. They have decided not to do anything further with it. And that was their answer as of today, because I talked to them last week, and I said, can you please check back? And their mayor has told them that they are not going to do anything further with this project at this time, especially after the pandemic. They don't know financially where they're going to stand. So I'm confused. That's why I had them go back and check, because I wanted to get their side of the story, see where they were at in regards to planning for this corridor. Mayor, do you know anything about this?
I can only tell you what the mayor of Taylor has told me, and that he's 100% supportive of this project. And he has had his staff in on all the meetings, and they've been, I could, I have not attended all the meetings, but the meetings I've attended, they've been very proactive. We may, I would certainly hope that they would reconsider if that's the case, but I'm more than willing to go to work and talk to each of them individually, if that's necessary, to try to get this moving again. And I just think it's too important for all our South End residents, and what that potentially could look like to let it go. Yeah, Taylor would need to obviously be a partner. I would ask that we, as a city, would want to go forward, and then put the onus on myself and the members of Tifa and everything else to get that support from Taylor, and we pledge we'll do it.
Okay, I've got some questions here. First, I have Councilman Muscat, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, and then Councilman Conston. Councilman Muscat, go ahead, please.
Unfortunately, I don't want to spend a penny until I get Taylor's commitment that they're going to do something. I also talk to councilpeople in Taylor, and they're just lost with it. They're not going to go forward with it, as far as I know. So I'm not going to vote to put any money into it until Taylor comes to us and says, yes, they're going to go forward it, and they put their half in. And until they commit to that, I can't see me committing money, either from Tifa or from our general fund for that at all. And it needs to be in writing.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, go ahead, please.
Thanks, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I agree that it'd be wise to iron down that detail with the City of Taylor, maybe having, you know, obviously further discussions, but a possible joint study session with them. I do have some concerns, I guess, questions I wanted to ask. Being that Van Boren is a county road, where is Wayne County on this? Because we haven't necessarily heard or seen that piece addressed. The other thing, you know, we talk about the used car lots, which I've mentioned before. I know you mentioned you're talking about the zoning. I know the Redevelopment Ready Community is a great program that can assist us through that process. So I want to take a look at that piece as well. And the biggest piece I want to address is, I think it's great that you've had a few businesses, or however many businesses have been involved with input. I think it's very critical for that piece, but also to make sure we have a listening session, listening, hearing, visioning session with our residents as well, as the corridor is the gateway to the neighborhoods. And they should definitely have input through a visiting, excuse me, visionary or listening section. So there's a couple of different pieces I'd like to hear be addressed, please. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and let's remember that this got started in part when Masco leased the property to Ford. And I see on Van Boren, in the old Kmart parking lot, the parking lot full of cars of Ford workers. The area west of Telegraph, particularly on the Taylor side, there's a lot of small auto and truck repair businesses that sort of come and go. And we had some major development years ago, the old Metro Truck Stop, that some developers put up a medical office building there, and that never really took off, but it's much better than it was before. I think, I agree with everyone else that, I think Taylor was involved, and we can keep them involved. They have a lot to. And particularly on their side of it, we are just now starting to see the increased traffic on Van Boren from Ford using the old Masco property. And I think any development, you know, it has to be planned out. We're going to have to make some investment. I know that things are volatile in Taylor right now, but I don't, I don't think that the council speaks for the City of Taylor and what they're going to do.
Who else?
Yeah. Can we have Dan Brooks? If he's on the call, does he have any input to enlighten us with?
Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
Okay. In terms of answering the question with Taylor, I know our staff has had meetings with the mayor recently in the past week. And the mayor is supportive of this project, and wants to move it forward. Maybe he hasn't sent it to council yet, you know, and maybe they're waiting for Dearborn Heights to see how they want to respond to the proposal. And you can always put a conditional approval on the proposal that both communities approve it before any work is, you know, starts. All right, and a couple of comments that Lisa made. There is a large public engagement part of this proposal. We have a couple of public meetings. The Steering Committee is going to meet, scheduled up to meet up to five times. The meeting with the Planning Commission on both communities. There'll be council updates on both communities. So there is public engagement in this process, particularly going through the ordinances and the land use issues that are out there. But I think Taylor probably is supportive. Maybe the council isn't aware of what some of the.
What I did is I reached out to them last week, and I told them to get an update, because when they told me they weren't interested, I said, well, maybe things have changed, because moving forward, it has not changed.
Okay, well, we, like the mayor said, we probably need to do that work in the next couple of weeks to reach out to them and try to get both communities to come together. And we won't start until both communities do approve and authorize the work.
I quite honestly would like to have a study session and include all of their council members and their mayor in to discuss this openly. Because they've gotten Zoomed, it's much easier now to bring us all together, even though we're in different cities. And I would like to schedule a Zoom session with them.
Well, that's possible, yes.
Yes, I would. And Councilman Della, you're next, please.
Yeah, I just want to say, honestly, I'm very, very disappointed in this, because we've had, you know, multiple meetings on this. We've had multiple conversations about this. We had the thing at the center down in South Heights, where both mayors were there, the residents were there for putting in input. And then we had a meeting a couple of weeks back. This COVID thing, although I get what's going on with COVID, but that's been the last 60, 90 days. And for this thing to completely stop it, and then they have the city council in Taylor not even be on board at all on this, that's very disappointing. And I'll be honest with you, for this thing to take three, four years, and since we started on day one until today, personally for me, actually for myself, I've seen nothing that's changed, other than this type of stuff, talk about it. But really, nothing has moved forward, and that's honestly very disappointing. I'm very, very disappointed in this thing, and the progress that's been made. I don't know if it's on the Taylor side, or if it's on our side, but the end result has not been good, honestly.
Taylor City Council said they were told this a year and a half ago, that we would not be moving forward with them. Councilman Wentz, you're next.
Yeah, I just wanted a couple of things that testified to what Lisa Cordy said about her being dedicated to the community. Her maiden name is Nader, and they did come from a large family, 15 kids. And they're famous in the neighborhood. And now her and her husband Matt, they own Business Cordy's Collision. They're still dedicated to the community, you know. They sponsor many events. They're sponsoring the Ecorse Creek cleanup, which we still plan on having, probably sooner than people realize. We'll be making some announcements on that. But I think we should leave this up to Tifa and the administration to get ahold of Taylor and iron out these things until we move forward. But it's a good project. It's a great project, and I think we have to go forward with it. But without their involvement, I think it'd be pretty tough. But even without their involvement, we should try to do something about this, because it is very important to the South End of Dearborn Heights, and Dearborn Heights as a whole. Thanks.
Is there any other questions or comments from anybody? Okay, I've got Director McIntyre.
No, one more.
Hold on.
Tom wanted to get back in there.
Hold on, I'll unmute him. I got it, George.
At the same time.
Are you unmuting it?
I did it. Jack, you have to unmute yourself.
That's why we couldn't get you in here.
He's unmuted. He's unmuted now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm also one of the members of the Steering Committee. Super excited to be a part of this process. When I went down to the first meeting, I was blown away by Taylor's enthusiasm and excitement. There were members of their council, and a lot of their Tifa members. They have a program that's going on called Great to Good. And if you drive around parts of Taylor, you'll see their signs that they're just such a motivated group of people when it comes to their city. And after we were done with the meeting, we kind of, some of us walked out in the parking lot. And it was interesting, their impression of us was that we were not on board, that they had heard a lot of different conflicting things about our commitment to this project. So I'm going to ask, you know, hopefully this is appropriate, but I would like to ask a favor that I think everyone, that's, I call it the Brady Bunch screen. Everyone in this Brady Bunch screen, I think, is excited about this project. They want to see it happen. We want to see it get done. So I think if we can make a commitment to be positive about it, you know, be stewards of it, and talk about it a lot, keep talking. Every time I'm in the South End, people are constantly asking me, where are we at with the Van Boren project? Where are we going with it? They're excited about it. They really want it to happen. The piece that's obviously very critical is that we need to make sure that our ordinances match Taylor's ordinances. And even if Taylor is not willing to commit to the full-range project, and they want to be cautious about that, and I'm sure the mayor will have some conversations and be able to get back with you. I don't think, I think they're probably still on board with us, at least making sure that our ordinances and zonings are mutual, so that a project, once we get those things taken care of, we can just, you know, the sky's the limit in what we can do, as long as we're complementing each other with our zoning process. So I just want to say that I think, I think we tend to kind of, at least it's been my experience, that we tend to kind of lose enthusiasm really quickly. And I just would hate to see that happen with this. There's so many people, I was at the community meeting. I was at the beginning meetings, all of them, where we started talking about what things need to happen. And then I was at the community meetings, and I was talking to a lot of people. They've been waiting a really long time for this, and they really want to see it go through. So hopefully, we can get those questions answered. We can get reassurance that Taylor's committed. I really believe they are. I can't believe it would change that quickly, because, I mean, Lisa was there, and Tom was there. We sat next to each other. And those people were so excited about this project. So it just shocks me that where they're at with it. So, but I don't want us to lose momentum. I think we owe it to the South End. I started in the South End, you know, on Dudley Street, you know. We owe it to these people to really stay positive about it. And the thing, the more we talk about it in a positive way, like, this is going to happen. We're going to make it happen, you know. There's a lot of processes. I think it's going to happen. I think we're going to get it done. I really believe that, so, thank you.
Those people.
Councilman Muscat, did you have another question?
Well, it's not a question. It's a comment. But, you know, we're going to spend $17,000 for a study. Now, if they're not on board, why should we spend $17,000? I don't want to spend the money if we're not on board. We get them on board, I'm all for it. But I'm not going to spend $17,000 for another failed study. We've put money into this already. We've had, we paid for mockups of what the place is going to look like, and it hasn't gone anywhere. I don't want to spend another dime until they're on board and ready.
Okay, we've got Tom next, please.
Yeah, Councilman, I just want to kind of clarify you. This isn't actually a study. This is actually the nuts and bolts work of the ordinance work. This is comparing their ordinances to ours, mashing them together into something that would be acceptable to both communities to present to the city councils as a final product for adoption, or, you know, if there's concerns.
It's still $17,000, no matter where it comes from. It's coming from the taxpayers. And until we get their commitment, then they're going to do the same thing, that they're going to spend their share of the $17,000. I don't want to go forward with it.
Right, and Wade Trim won't want to go forward with it either, with only half the cost being covered. But I just want to say, too, it would be good, maybe, to have this discussion with the council members. I'm wondering, maybe their impression was the, you know, the numbers, the big numbers, we're here for the roadwork and things like that, which is kind of a farther end of this project? Maybe that's what they have in mind. Because when we had the meeting with the Taylor representatives, their entire Economic Development Department was there, and they were all 100% saying this is going forward, talking about names for the district, things like that. So maybe there's just a little miscommunication, like you said, if we get together and talk.
Yeah, I think our best thought is just to have a joint Zoom meeting with both cities and get it put out there and have it recorded, so we have proof of where we each are going.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, any other questions? This time, I'm going to adjourn the study session. We will come back in 10 minutes to do a meeting at 7:00.